So this evening, the only item on our agenda is to have the presentation of the Middle School Project by Harriman and Associates. And I've seen some of this from the JS SBC, but I know I speak for all of us when I say that we're very excited to see what you guys have to show us. Just as a matter of some housekeeping, I would like to let our guests finish their presentation before we have questions. And then I'd like to just go around the room and have everybody get a chance to ask their first question, and then their second question. That way, we have the ability for everyone to get their questions asked. Does anyone have any objections to this? No? Mr. Mosher, are you all right with that plan?
Yes, I am.
All right.
Sounds like a plan.
All right. Thank you so much. So the floor is yours, gentlemen.
Yeah, I just wanted to welcome Harriman and Harvey Construction back. They're spearheading the project, and we'll be giving a presentation as to where we are at the moment in this study. And we are still gathering input from a number of people. Tonight, we'll be getting input from the Board of Ed. If a question comes up after this evening, you can send it to us, and we will address it. Also, tomorrow evening at 7:45, there's a meeting for the public to come in and be able to walk around, see what they present, and ask any questions that they have, or give inputs as to their thoughts. And then all of that will come back to the joint special for -- so we can determine what the comments should be included, which ones perhaps can't be for a number of reasons, and we'll go from there. All right. Mark?
Very good. Thank you very, very much. We appreciate this opportunity to, once again, come forward and share the months-long work on the part of the entire team of consultants, and also our collaboration with the JS SBC. And to bring this information forward tonight to share with the Board of Education, we have information that I think is familiar to many of you, but we'll go through it. And we're really grateful to be at this point in the process where we can share the concept plans of this feasibility study and get your questions. And as we move into the next steps of a very public part of the process, it felt like for months, we've been working at gathering a lot of information, analyzing it, and synthesizing that into some plans. And so here we are at this point to share it. The five different areas that we're going to review mimic largely the information that's presented in the binder, I think, that everyone now has. But it's really, first, just give a quick overview of the objectives and goals of this entire feasibility study. Next one is to look again at some of the high-level facilities components. What were those items that we identified as we looked at the existing infrastructure? And again, we've shared with you folks on a number of occasions, but we'll highlight those and summarize those again. The next piece we get into is what we call the programming, and that's really the space utilization of the buildings. How are the spaces being utilized in the three existing schools? And what are the needs as we think about addressing these schools and the middle school needs for the next generation of learners and teachers? From that, we'll look at the proposed concept designs. And then finally, we'll look at a quick overview of what the financial items that are a result of these concept designs. And that was an effort really with Harvey Construction as the construction manager through this pre-construction phase. It's done a lot of hard work in getting up to this point. So without further ado, the first one is really thinking about what are the three real important goals of this project? And the first was, as we all, I think, remember, this really started with addressing deficiencies at the Elm Street School. And it's an aged building. It's designed and constructed during the Works Progress Administration era of our country, and then seen updates throughout its history. But it's in significant need of renewal of the building systems. And so that was the first thing. And there were really two options when we think of how we would address those. One is, what would it look like to invest in the existing Elm Street building to bring it to a standard that addresses the majority of the building deficiencies and addresses the program needs of middle schools? The second option is to look at, well, what would it look like if we were to construct a new school to replace the Elm Street School? And so those are sort of the -- one of the very first goals of this feasibility study. And also, just a note on this terminology of feasibility. What we have done to this point is really developed the design to a point to be able to answer the questions of what size of a school, or renovations, or additions would we be looking at? Where would it fit? How much would it cost? And how would it solve our problems? And so that's the feasibility. It's not a final design. It takes a lot longer to actually develop the final completed design documents that we would use to build from. And so it's really important to understand that this is what we call a concept study, just at the conceptual level. The next item, the next goal, was to review the facility conditions at all three middle schools. And so it wasn't simply just Elm Street. But early on, the task was, this is really a middle schools project, not an Elm Street middle school project. And so that encompassed looking at all three and their conditions of their facilities, both the building systems, as well as the program needs of those three schools as well. And the third piece is really this idea of evaluating a different model. Right now, the populations of each of the three middle schools vary significantly, and correspondingly, the facility sizes are different. And so Penachuk being the smallest, and then Fairgrounds, and then certainly Elm Street being the largest of the three middle schools. And so it was asked of Harriman when we began this study to look at, what would a model look like for three approximately 800-student-plus middle schools? And so, and in particular, as we look at this model, how does the three different -- or how does this model of three roughly the same-sized schools address issues of the special education spaces? And so understanding how they would be distributed throughout the district, and where the different programs would exist. We would also look at this idea of the middle school team concept. And that really is the idea of that, at the middle school, it's really important, from a social and emotional development stage, to think about breaking down the population into groupings at our smaller communities. And that's a healthier way of transitioning from an elementary school model, where you may have a single classroom, or you may have one or two classroom teachers that you interact with, to the high school, where we have multiple teachers and instructors in various disciplines. And so this idea of having smaller teams, and how does a building support those? And as we know, Elm Street was not designed that way. It was designed as a high school originally, and so it doesn't have teaming organizational physical plant infrastructure for that. And Penachuk doesn't have a significant amount of that clustering of teams either. So that was another item. Unified arts was an important aspect. Each of the three schools has slightly different unified arts programs and facilities. And so part of the analysis was looking at, how do those become equalized so that the same opportunities for students, doesn't matter what school that they're going to, what middle school? Another lens that we looked at is safety and security, and that's an important consideration in today's day and age, and it's a reality that we all live with. And so how are we addressing the issues of school safety and security in a new model with work at each of the three schools? Another item that we considered was the athletic play space, physical education spaces. And predominantly, the big item there is that the current Elm Street, because of its location in a pretty tight urban site, does not have play fields onsite. And so that was an issue that we looked at. In addition to thinking about the schools that are going to grow in their populations, and that's primarily Penachuk and Fairgrounds, it was looking at the core space capacity. And when we think about core spaces, we're talking about those spaces such as the library and the cafeteria, kitchen, those things that have to support the whole school population, not simply the number of classrooms that we have. Lastly, in this model that we evaluated, was looking at issues regarding the site. And so not simply just the building itself, but how does a site have appropriate parent and bus drop-off and pickup locations? Emergency access to the site? And then safe pedestrian access in and through the site as well? So those are our items that we looked at as part of this study itself. Right now, Jamie Wollett from Harriman is going to do a quick overview again of some of the facility condition issues, and I think you're familiar with many of these, but let Jamie do that.
So as we began, throughout this process, we started looking at all the buildings, as Mark suggested, during the facility analysis. We went to, started off with Elm Street School, and then that progressed on to reviewing Penachuk and Fairgrounds School. So part of that process involves us going to these buildings with engineers, architects, a group of, a large group of people go, and we went through the entire building, and we investigated all the systems, and every room of the building, and looked around, and made notes, and comments, and pictures. And a lot of that is in that report that you have all received. At that point, we review the findings and analyze them, and then we summarize all those findings and put them into that binder as you have. We make recommendations based on those findings. So I'm going to go through a list, through a list for each school. This list is not all-inclusive of items that are identified in the report, but kind of some high-level items, maybe bigger items. A lot of these were ones that we brought up to the staff at our recent staff meeting, or staff presentation. You know, you saw a lot of head nods out there as we were showing them. So Elm Street School was the first school we visited. We've actually been several times to this one to do further investigations. So you start off with portable classrooms was one of the deficiencies found. Failing concrete structure, you can see that in that right middle picture there. The 1960s wing had some structural concrete that is starting to fall and fall apart. There's no athletic fields. Inadequate parking. Traffic and pedestrian safety issues. Accessibility is limited throughout the building. An aged heating system and poor ventilation. And then classroom electrical capacity is limited, which means there's maybe not as many outlets as needed in each classroom to support the current technology that we have. Over at Fairgrounds, things that were noted were things like pedestrian site safety issues again. Exterior doors and frames were noted to be rusted. The accessibility is limited in some of the spaces. The aged power distribution system, so the wiring throughout the building shows signs of aging. It's dated to the '70s when the building was built. Classroom electrical capacity is limited. Again, the classrooms may not have enough outlets to support the current technological needs. Access control is limited. Okay, I'm sorry about that. Over at Penachuk Middle School, we again have the portable classrooms. The exterior doors and frames are noted here to be rusted as well. Interior finishes and folding partitions are aged. There's a middle picture over on the right there that's showing some of the, one of the folding partitions between classrooms. And it's actually, has some damage up in the middle there, if you can see it. Accessibility is limited to some spaces. This is one of the newer of the schools, or at least the newest built, aside from some additions at Elm Street. So it has a little better accommodations for accessibility, but there was still some areas noted that needed improvement. There's aged mechanical units. And access control is limited. Intercom systems are outdated.
Very good. Thank you, Jamie. So the next thing we looked at, after we looked at the condition of the facilities, is really looking at the program. And again, it follows a similar process, where we evaluate what, we inventory and evaluate what is currently there. And then through a series of meetings with many stakeholders, staff input, and understanding enrollment as it currently is. We look at the Department of Ed requirements for these spaces, and then we propose what the space program would look like in this new model of the three 800-plus-student schools. And so, plus, and when I say the three, the model has two options. One option is looking at the maintaining Elm Street as its current location, and through additions, renovations, it would reduce in size or enrollment. And the other one is looking at the new school. And that's our option two, is looking at a new middle school to replace Elm Street. In both of those options, the work at Penachuk and Fairgrounds remains the same. So that's, as we look at these slides, you'll see that. So this slide, obviously, is difficult to read on the screen, but I think you've all see it in your packets. This is a summary slide of the existing spaces. And so what we did was analyzed the different spaces, how they're being used. And this gave us a benchmark in terms of how the current spaces are allocated. That was helpful because as we looked to the new model with the schools, it was to look at how the changes in programs and space needs have evolved over time. It also identifies the unified arts, and in particular, you've seen this one, that there's a difference in some of those. So you'll see, for instance, that STEM and robotics programs are offered at Elm Street and Fairgrounds, but Penachuk does not have a robotics/STEM room. And so that's, again, one consideration that the Elm Street School, the existing, has four computer labs, whereas Fairgrounds and Penachuk have fewer computer labs than that too. So there's a difference in that, and so that's helpful to understand. And also, the number of special education rooms that are offered at each school. So that's the first section up there. But from that, what we do is we also can determine theoretical calculated capacity of each of the schools. And that's helpful to understand, just in terms of how large of a student body that each can support. It's helpful to understand, too, that that's a calculated capacity, and utilization for middle schools is typically around 85% utilization. So we would never sort of assume that you could fit 100% utilization. It would just be inflexible in terms of number of students in each class, and having some spare space in each of the rooms, or each of the classes. So a summary of the existing is that we have about 48 regular classrooms. And when we say full size, understand that the Elm Street Schools' classrooms are much smaller than the state standards. State standard's 900 square feet for a classroom. And the classrooms, many of the classrooms at Elm Street are in the 700 to 800 square foot range. So there are more classrooms, but they're smaller there. Fairgrounds has 32 regular, and we exclude the special education and special service spaces when we do that inventory. And then Penachuk has 28 classrooms, which includes the portables, or the modular classrooms. So using a capacity of 22 to 25 students per classroom, that gives us our current capacity, excluding special education, self-contained rooms of about 2468. And so the total capacity, including special education rooms, is approximately currently around 2758. And so, again, that's a calculated theoretical capacity. And so the current enrollment is about 300 students less than that. So that's just a benchmark of the existing space. As we discussed, we have two options that we considered. And so this slide just illustrates the idea that option one is the renovation to Elm Street and the renovations, additions to Fairgrounds and Penachuk. So this is the summarized table of that in some level of detail, but I'll jump to the higher level one, which looks at 33. So what we do in a renovation to Elm Street is increase those sizes, so they meet the Department of Ed standards for a 900-square-foot classroom. And so we would have 33 proposed regular ed classrooms at Elm Street, 32 at Fairgrounds, and 36 at Penachuk. And the difference in those is because we're looking at the existing infrastructure, which is slightly different at each of those. But what you'll see is that the population of, sort of calculated capacity, is approximately around the 800. The additions to Penachuk, and we'll explore those when we look at the floor plans, accommodate, can accommodate a little bit more than that 800 number. But using this model, on option one, we look at, you'll see there's still a number of the district special education programs, and that's project achievement bridges, as well as some of the other self-contained special education programs at the Elm Street location. And so that accounts for a larger enrollment at Elm Street. And the reason in this option that that's the case is that the existing facility just has more square feet, and that we can accommodate those at that location. So the proposed enrollments, if, as we look down, would be 815 for Elm Street, 800 for Fairgrounds, and 800 for Penachuk. And that's proposed enrollments. There is additional capacity, but that's to accommodate the current enrollment in the district. Option two is looking at a new middle school to replace Elm Street. And as I said, Fairgrounds and Penachuk remain the same. And again, I won't go through each tallied room on this sheet, but I will go to the summary again of this. And it's, they're very comparable in terms of the number. I think instead of 33, we have 34 full-size classrooms at the proposed new school. We have 32 and 36. Those columns remain the same. So the big difference is that the special education programs that we have currently at Elm Street would move to the new school, as well as we have some intensive needs programs. In particular, at Fairgrounds, there's an intensive need that would work better if we could put that at the new school, because we could build it very purposely designed for the needs of the students in those programs. And so that's included in the capacity at the new middle school. And you'll see roughly the same distribution of, and proposed enrollments, with slightly more at the new school here. So just a quick overview of that in the program. The special education programs, the bridges and project achievement stay at Elm Street or the new middle school. The capacity of a renovated Elm Street or the new middle school are nearly the same, and their, the calculated capacity is just over 1,000, with the proposed enrollments at about 815. Fairgrounds, the calculated capacity is about 818, with a proposed enrollment of 800. And Penachuk, in both options, would be a calculated capacity of 888, with a proposed enrollment of 800. All the middle schools under the new model would have the same UA programs, and they would all have those proposed team areas that we talked about very early on, this idea of a goal of organizing the middle schools around the teaming concept. And so at this point, Jamie's going to give us a quick overview of the concepts. And the concepts are largely in plan view, because that's how we ensure that we have all the spaces accounted for. So we organize these spaces in plan. And the importance in this is to realize that, at this point in the design, what we're trying to do is make sure that we've accounted for the programs and rooms to accommodate those programs. We haven't designed every piece of casework or piece of equipment in those rooms, or the number of desks, but what we have done is allocated enough area in the plans for those. The location within a building can also shift, and they often do as we get through the more detailed design phases of a project. And so with that, Jamie?
Thank you. So we go to the, kind of, the options overview. Just again, it's Elm Street or the new middle school, and the work associated with both Fairgrounds and Penachuk. So at Elm Street, at the site level, we look at removal of the portables, a single secure entrance location. Right now, we're entering on the backside and other areas. We'd like to bring that to one local spot, one single source. Additional off-street parking. A reconfigured drop-off at the entry bus loop. On-site dedicated parent drop-off, which is right in front of the single secure entrance location, so that parents and people dropping off are used to coming right to that main secure entry. When you get into the building, you have that secure entrance right there, located on the A. A new relocated admin area, which supports that new secure entrance. It includes things like the nurses, guidance, and then also the admin right at the secure A new cafeteria and kitchen addition. The A, B, and C are all new additions to replace that failing structure that was spoke about during the facility assessment. So C is a new cafeteria and kitchen to replace that failing structure. D, updated sped classrooms. Modified and updated UA classrooms. Those team collaborative instructive spaces that Mark had mentioned. Resized classroom spaces, I guess, again, as Mark had mentioned, to help bring these into that 900-square-foot requirement. On the first floor, you have the same elements. And again, on the second and third floor, you have those same elements. We get over to Fairgrounds. We're looking to do some site improvement there. We look to upgrade the perimeter security drive, which is the one that goes around the building, that the fire trucks may use at this time. There's some eroding road there that needs to be replaced. Some additional parking on the south side of the building. A reconfigured drop-off and entry expanded bus loop. There's on-street queuing lane, so we've looked...
Miss... Thank you.
We look to separate the bus and parent drop-off. Currently, they kind of intermingle with each other and can create some safety issues for pedestrians and cars. So there's a new curb cut near that D that goes into a parent drop-off loop. And if I may, I'll point up here, but it comes in around and drops off to the entrance here. The bus loop is separate here at C, so that they don't ever cross each other, except in the main road. And so D supports an on-street queuing lane that's not in traffic. It's off to the side, and allows parents to queue up and unload. And then to support that parent bus drop, we've reconfigured the parking at that entry lot. There's still parking there for the Legacy Playground. In fact, further up the street here, there's some, still that parking would remain up here, and then these parking lots and these parking lots help support that Legacy Playground Inside the building, we have a new admin and secure entrance that supports that safety feature of having a secure entrance, instead of going down the hallway to the admin space like you would now if you went into the school. Upgrades to the unified arts programs. Science room upgrades. Those team collaborative instructive spaces... spaces. They kind of do exist in Fairgrounds to some level, but they, they could use a little finessing to be more, more utilized properly. Gymnasium upgrades, upgrades to the special education room, rooms, excuse me, limited, and some limited system upgrades, which includes electrical, mechanical, fire alarm. Over at Penachuk, we look to remove the portable classrooms. And at this school, we're looking to increase occupants, and we have to accommodate for that removal of portable classrooms. So here at B, we add some classroom additions. We are looking to, right now, the bus loop is, is here in this zone. It comes in here, and then parents come around the building, drop off in the bag in, in the exact direction. I'm not positive which way happens off the top of my head here. But we'd like to flip that. We propose to flip it, and it's, it can accommodate either way. But if we propose to flip it to keep the parents dropping off at the main entrance, to keep that secure entrance secure, and then this door back here would be the bus loop, and would be used for, you know, would be a timed door so that the buses are allowed, or the doors are open for the buses during bus drop-off and pickup times. So with that proposal, we've, we've configured some parking back here to help accommodate not only that, but also the additions that are going in. So a new bus drop-off there at D, like I mentioned, and a new parent drop-off at E. We're looking to add a traffic signal at Manchester and Ferry Road. And then additionally, that, that, there was concerns about A, not having a second access to the site, and then also helping separate the buses from the, the parents and cars coming in. So we've created an additional entry for buses over off to that, where the G is located. Sure. There's, we've been asked about the building shape in this corner here, the building, and, and so I'll come out and mention that there's a easement for the water, a big, huge fifty-four inch diameter pipe right through here. You wouldn't think so with the size of the site that there was, there was many constraints on here, but there's easements all over this site. There's a, there's a power company easement here that we were, we were working with. There's a water one here, so we are, we are continuing to fill the capacity of this site, but it, what we show here seems to work. We also added a separation median here to bring in, you know, there's two lanes going out, single lane coming in, and that keeps them separate. And you can see the right and left turn lane there. I know these bubbles kind of hide some of that. And then there's a, we widen the road here and have an entering, turning lane here at the light going this direction and on, so south, southbound. And then northbound, there's a turnoff lane coming into the site, so that it's not blocking the traffic that's going straight through. We also improve, improve the pedestrian crossing with the lights and, and having a signal At the building level, we've, again, added those classroom additions, those bars on the left and right of the plan. We've added a library addition down to the bottom of the page there at B. We've upgraded some of the unified art spaces, science room upgrades, team collaborative instructive spaces, gymnasium upgrades, and a stage addition. This was one of the schools noted to not have a performance area, and so we look to add a stage at, at this building. And then upgrades to the special education rooms and a cafeteria expansion to accommodate the increased capacity. Over at the new site, I guess I, I should have, you know, I thought I should probably put a slide where this is located. I presume most people know based on the discussions, but if you're not sure, this is Cherrywood Drive. It's in the southwest quadrant of the city. This is Medallion Court, and Buck Meadow is off the page here. You can't quite see it, but it's over here, and it goes up to Main Dunstable, which is up this way. Does that sound about right? So here, we look to, this is a city-owned property, and we look to put a twenty, it's a twenty-acre development, site development. There's on-street parking, recreational playfields and courts, there's a natural preservation area, connection to trail network, access drive out to Buck Meadow, emergency access from Cherrywood, water and sewer is available at Cherrywood. And then there's power, the, the right power that we need for this sized building is located up on Buck Meadow. Sidewalks to the site would, would be out to Buck Meadow. There's some sidewalks down Buck Meadow to a certain point. It'd be extended to there. And a dedicated service and emergency drive around the building. And a dedicated safe special education play area. A little, little more information on the site that's not quite shown with bullets. So that main access drive comes from Buck Meadow down, down through to this point, comes in, and we have a bus drop-off loop here, which brings you into, let's say, a secondary entrance. Parents would come down and drop off to the main entrance, which is right here. So that'll be relevant in the next slide when we go to look at the secure entrance, so you can kind of know where you are, but, so that parent drop-off comes here. That's good. All right. And then, so here's the new building. So just as a reference, A right here is that point I was saying is the main, the main entry, and that secondary entry for the buses is up in this location up here. So A, secure entrance. B, we look to have innovative middle school classroom communities. The way it's laid out allows for these communities of, of each pod to collaborate together in the center. The ability to close off public spaces for after-school activities and community access. So there's a, a set of doors here that, that barricades, or barricades is the wrong, wrong expression, that blocks the, this area off from the public areas up here. There's always access out from this space for safety, but it keeps the people that are supposed to stay up here during the evening events or after-school activities from going down through there. Twenty-first century unified arts and STEM spaces, enhanced special education spaces, an administration nurse and guidance area, gym performance space or stage area, cafeteria and library, and then possible future addition locations. So we looked at it and said you could potentially add additions at these spaces. It's very easy to add to the ends of these, these pods. Anything we should add on ground floor, right? Oh, no, I guess, I guess we talked about the ground floor. I apologize for that delay there. I was thinking of something, but the, the ground floor area was put in there as additional space, which is next to that special education play area that I showed on the last slide. It's a nice secure entry. It's, it was brought up to us earlier that we had, it was shown as in the basement, and I, and by no means this is a basement area. It's actually ground level. The, what you can't see in that flat plan on the previous slide was that it, that the site slopes off quite a bit down on that end. So this, that whole ground floor area has daylight all the way around it, and it has a nice secure play area outside off to one side, and there's access direct to the, the loop that happens right around the building right here. So I just wanted to address the concern there.
And, and just for the clarification, that program space for the ground floor is what was looked at as an alternate to accommodate, right now, students that, because of their needs, are currently being serviced out of district. And so the idea that, that was there a mechanism or way we could design the new facility to accommodate students that are currently serviced, I believe it's in Massachusetts. And so, so we looked at the opportunity to create six special education spaces for various student needs, as well as additional support spaces in that area. And it, and it's stacked in nicely on the sites, on a quieter edge of the site, and it has direct access outdoors to, to a play area that's, that's set, set right next to those classrooms, so.
And I guess another, another point about this is we showing some of these classrooms laid out in a certain way, which you'll see on there. As Mark mentioned earlier, nothing, nothing of this is set in stone. We, we, the, the exact locations of things will be, should this direction be chose on any of them, finessed with, with, with the appropriate parties. So you get up to the second and third floor. There is, the second floor has a library up here that looks, overlooks the cafeteria below, and then you have the classroom wings, again, that are separated from the public areas. And then the third floor is just classroom wings. Elevators serve all levels, and then with the ground floor level, there's an additional elevator to serve that area, should that alternate be chosen.
Thank you, Jamie. So the last portion that we're going to look at is the schedule and the financial summary. And so in thinking of the anticipated schedule, the start at, at, if, if we went with the Elm Street model or renovation that option, we would most likely be looking at a winter 2021 start of construction, and because it's an occupied building that requires an extensive amount of work, you're really looking at a pretty long construction cycle of about forty-eight months, or four years, to finally get through that. It may, may seem like a lot, but it's a large facility, and thinking about how to create swing space, move people out of an area, renovate that area, and then continue to move students in and around. So somewhat disruptive in terms of thinking about the number of changes, not that it's not, not feasible, but, but it is a bit of effort to get through four years of it. At Fairgrounds, the work is probably the, anticipate the least amount of, of work, and so the anticipated work could even start the summer of 2020, this upcoming summer. And summers are important because that's when Harvey can get the most work done without occupancy. There's, there's no one in the building or limited use of the buildings. So that would be about an eleven-month anticipated construction duration for that project. And then Penachuk, fairly significant amount of work with the additions, but the nice thing about doing additions is that you can build them while the, the school is occupied. And so it looks to, we, we could start that as early as the summer of 2020, and that would be a fourteen-month construction duration. The new middle school, again, it would take a little longer to complete the, the construction and documents for the, the contractor to build from, and the anticipation is that you could actually, you may be able to start some of the site work before the, the drawings are done. So you, you could potentially start that work in 2020 with the start on the new building itself later that year or in early 2021, with about a twenty-four month construction for the new school. And, and the advantage, obviously, of, of a new building is that you're, you've got the site free and clear to build from while your existing school remains occupied, and then, and then certainly, as soon as the new middle school is completed, then you can move the occupants into that during the summer in anticipation of start of school in the fall. The next slide looks at what the project costs would be for each of the, the proposed scope of work. So the, the scope of work, as we've identified, for an addition renovation to the existing Elm Street school would be approximately ninety-three million. And so that includes not only the construction costs, but also all the other, what we call soft costs, the cost for consultants to design it, the testing consultants. It also accommodates furniture, fixtures and equipment, what we call FFE. So it's everything, we like to say that if you took the building and you, you sort of shook it, you took it upside down and you shook it, everything that's not attached to the building is, is sort of that FFE. And so all of those are built into the total project cost, and, and that's, and that, that's because there's, as we talked about in the report, you'll see that, that there's a fairly significant amount of effort involved in some of the structural upgrades and resizing of the rooms and the insertion of the new systems. And so, so that's what contributes to that, as well as the duration of construction contributes to increased cost as well. The new school is anticipated, as we've shown it, to be about seventy-eight million of project cost. The Fairgrounds, as I said, was the most modest of the three different scope items, and that, right now, with the scope we've shown, is about a twelve million project cost. Penachuk is, is about a twenty-four point six million. And then that alternate lower level of those out of, currently out of district programs, we anticipate that that, that wing of a proposed new school would be approximately four point eight million project cost. And that concludes the summary of, of where we are currently with the feasibility study. And we appreciate the time to, to share this with you and are available for any comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Raymond had to step out for a moment, so I'm just going to help her out for, for, until she comes back. What she had promised was that we would go around the room, and each member would get a chance to ask questions or make comments. So I'm going to do that. I'm going to begin with Mr. Mosher, who is on the telephone with us. If he is still with us, I would like him to. Mr. Mosher, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Do you have any questions or comments to begin?
Well, I don't have questions. I, I think they've answered a lot of the concerns that I had quite well. I have a concern about the, the problems with, with Elm Streets, because I am familiar with the school somewhat, so I did have two, two of my children went there. And I think the, the price is high, but then again, we are dealing with a, an older building with a lot of hidden features that date back, what, the nineteen thirties, I guess. And I think the building typically is, is obsolete, and it should be, you know, used for something other than, you know, a school, because the, the school is going to be a rather tough road to hoe for that building. You know, to be recommissioned as possibly studio apartments or, you know, some kind of retail artist configuration, you know, offices, real estate, and doctors, dentists, things like that, to go in there, as they would not be as, as rough on the building and as necessary to create the, the security alternatives and parking, et cetera. There's so many things that, you know, I can visualize with that, but I think that it's time for us to, you know, get together and just say, this, the building has had it. It's needed in some other fashion rather than the school. But I think they, they've covered it pretty well, and, you know, there's a lot of work that has to be done there, but I think for other purposes, it could be, could be done, and it could be a profitable building for the, some other, other kinds of business besides the school. But the other schools, I, I can see that some of it would be, you know, fairly reasonable to, to update and to get fixed up. I think our best option is to fix up the ones that are the, the least requiring of, you know, heavy building, and go ahead with the, with the, the proposal for the, for the newer building, and that would give us a, a new building with a, at least a fifty, sixty year life, and it would be easily upgraded when we need it. The classrooms are... The classrooms would be of the proper size. Electrical would be modern. The security would be modern. And I think that would be the best way to go. I mean, I have been around the trades for a long time. And I'm sorry to say, but I think that the money spent on getting the new school up and running, I think that would be a good thing. And I would probably look to make it one of the priorities. And of course, you can build over there without the disturbance to the school days that we still have left at Elm Street. So I've said my piece.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. I'm going to turn the meeting back to Ms. Raymond. She has rejoined us.
Thank you so much, Mr. Guarino. Thank you, Mr. Mosher. As I said before, I'd like to go around the room for the questions. So, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I reviewed a good chunk of this, and I had written some questions. And I also created a spreadsheet that has some questions derived from it. So maybe you want to do someone else, and I'll distribute this, and you can come back to me later.
Sure, we can do that. I would like us to do, you know, short questions and not, you know, 17-part questions, if we can avoid it. So why don't you go ahead and hand that out, and then we'll go to Ms. Hohensee and come back to you.
Thank you. Well, keep in mind, that side of the room is on JSSBC and have been asking their questions. This side is relatively new.
Okay, let's be clear. First of all, Ms. Timmons is not on JSSBC. And both you and Mr. Kaufman had a number of questions at our last meeting. I'm trying to be fair to everyone. We've all thought of new questions since last week. Please go ahead.
Are we going to allow the public that is in the room tonight to speak also?
We don't have a public comment period scheduled this evening, but we'll keep an eye on the clock, and I'm open to it.
Okay. Yeah, I have that, thank you. I'm wondering what type of enrollment study? There was supposed to be some reasonable enrollment projections developed through a statistically valid process, according to ED 321.07. I didn't find it in the report. Is that available to me?
At this point, what we've done is looked at the enrollment statistics provided to us from the school district, as well as allowed for flexibility in terms of the capacity as we illustrated in the different slides on the capacity and the programming of the three schools.
If I can just interject there, and I'll turn it over to Dan. We've also been working in conjunction with the architects and the construction of Harvey to get some numbers. We also, I'll turn it over to Dan, have done some preliminary numbers as well. And keep in mind, this is enrollment, which means that it hasn't accounted for new construction throughout the city as well, particularly on referencing the new apartments near Dr. Chris. So that's kind of another variable out there, too, and home sales as well. So just understand, this stuff is never perfect. It's an estimation. I'll turn it over to Mr. Donovan.
Okay, thank you. Just to update people, I'll have more information available in the next couple of days. But the last time we had an official estimate done was two years ago, and it was done by the National Regional Planning Commission. We can ask for another one of those to be done. But what I have done is I took fiscal year '18, '19, and '20, the last two years, in this school year, and I broke out the numbers. I also took a look at the number of students that are at other schools. So the Nashua students that are not in our public schools, for example, children attending the Catholic schools, World Academy, Academy of Science Design, and the charter schools, the microsociety, and the art school. So basically, I have those numbers. If you take the existing numbers in this year in grades six, seven, and eight, if you added back all of the students from those schools, which would never happen, they're not all going to come back, you'd have numbers like 905, 946, and 909, as far as the number of students in those three grades. But obviously, that's your, sort of your max number. The numbers that we're dealing with now is, in the presentation, are pretty close, 835, 829, and 790 for six, seven, and eight. So I did go back and take a look at the document prepared by the National Regional Planning Commission. This was two years ago, but they projected five or six years ahead. Their projections are actually lower. They have three different models that they use. All three of their models are slightly lower than the actual numbers we have here. So we certainly can do this. We should do this. But I've been dealing with these sort of things since I've been here for nine to 10 years. They're not very accurate, as far as if you're looking for an exact number. They're going to be within a percentage. So like I said, we'll do that. That will take the planning committee some time. We have to reach out and get that. But I certainly, I don't know, it'll hold up the process. I don't think it will. So like I said, the one thing I haven't done is taken a look at the out-of-district students. We talked about that and the potential. So I have a list of all the out-of-district students. I need to then sort that by sort of grades to get a sense, so that number can sort of be added into the equation. Keep in mind, out-of-district students, some of them may be a residential. They're certainly not coming back. And there's, in total, there's about 100 out-of-district students at this point in time within the whole district. But we're really looking at middle school level. That's going to be much lower than the 100. So that's just sort of an update on where we are. Like I said, when I complete this in the next couple of days, I'll certainly share it with the whole group.
And the other thing is, we certainly don't want to build the schools to the exact number of students we have today with no growth. You have to have some flexibility, which is also why we're looking at ways, in the future, if the population grows more than we've anticipated, to add on to the schools. But if you're going to add on to a school, that takes years. If you have things like Infant Jesus just closed their school, you get those students, and that's like instantaneous. So the other point is, we're planning on 22 to 24 students in a class. Would it be terrible if we had 20 students in a class? In the 18 years I've been dealing with education, we always say the classes are over too many students in them. If we can get the class right-sized, I think that goes a long way to bettering education.
Thank you all. Ms. Hohensee, do you know from, because you seem to have a very good understanding of the laws, do you know if, and 107 is specific about how contemporaneous the enrollment study has to be? Like, is within two years acceptable, or does it have to be entirely contemporaneous?
I would think you'd check with the department. I've got the rules here, but it doesn't go into that. And I guess a lot of this is so that we can get building aid if we don't qualify. I mean, if, I would think you have to put the design before you put, I mean, together with that information. But the department could certainly help you on that. I just had a question of the out-of-district placement you're pulling in. Is that just middle school, or is that going to be K-12? Or is it flexible that we can change it as we go?
So for that ground floor option?
Right, right.
Ideally, it's targeted just to middle school at this point. We wouldn't be changing any type of model. So our current model would remain the same. You know, we have elementary schools going up to fifth grade. The purpose of this presentation is to talk about our middle schools, which we're not changing. It's from six to eight.
So what percentage of our out-of-district placements would this be addressing? Is it a third or 25%?
Go ahead, Dan.
Well, like I mentioned earlier, I don't have that. I'll have that, I have the list of the students. I'll figure that out in the next day or two. But it's not a third. It's, I would suggest most of the out-of-district students are a little older. A lot of the out-of-district students are high school age. But there's, like I said, until I run the numbers is...
And I just want to add, it's not about, just adding to that question, it's not about the middle school students now. You've got to look at the students in our elementary schools and how they're going to filter in. So it's a very difficult question to answer because you have to build the program, you have to grow the program. But also, the way that it works with special ed, the team has to agree that this is the proper program. So it's a team decision. It's one of those things where good intentions can go well, but if we build it right and staff it right, certainly there's a potential to prevent out-of-district placements rather than calling kids back. So I would like to think of it as a kind of a two-way street, preventing and also perhaps having some opportunity to call kids back. I also would add that sometimes it's very difficult to call out-of-district kids back because of the facilities and the care that some of these out-of-district placements provide.
Yes, the attachments they get to the programs that they're in, that's strong.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Kaufman, are you prepared to choose one of your questions?
One question.
One question. Okay, I'll pick one question. Can the ground level, can the ground floor level be, this is almost at the bottom of the list. Can the ground floor level be extended to include district administrative offices? And let me explain this. That was part of the original request that was made back when this project started, was that we looked at moving the administrative offices on Led Street over to the Elm Street building. They proposed a wing, a multi-story piece, you know, multiple stories to accommodate 100 or so people that work at the district office. And that reason for that was so we could move, at the time, we were trying to figure out what we do with the Brentwood program. So, and Mr. Smith will probably remember, he drew up plans on what we could do to the Led Street location to accommodate the Brentwood program, with the idea of Brentwood being relocated possibly to Elm, sorry, into that building, and the administrative offices going to Elm. We've since put Brentwood into a leased location. Mr. Donovan, what is it, about $13,000 a month? If I remem...
Yeah, slightly less, about 11, 8, 12.
Oh, thank you, sorry. So nearly $12,000 a month. So that's cost, that's just, you know, draining out of the district in rent, and then plus all the utilities and stuff. So as far as I'm concerned, and considering, and since I only get one question, it's unfortunate, but we need to understand the delta. If you look at the new middle school, there's 193,000-plus square feet. If you look at the renovated Fairgrounds and Penachuk buildings, they're in 123, 134,000. So there's a difference of 70,000 square feet. And I want to understand where, what you're using there. It can't all be special education space. So if you're going to have all that under the roof, 10,000 square feet dedicated to the, which is what they have now, I think 8,000, for administrative space, looks like a good investment to move it, get Brentwood out of the lease business.
In a minute, I'm going to turn it over to Mark for the, to get the concrete answer. But certainly, that's a possibility at the new school. I think if the Board of Education and the superintendent feel they want to have their offices way down one end of the city, I don't know how that works structurally as far as meeting the needs. But I'll turn it over to Mark now to say about, is there space available?
Thank you, Alden Dowd. So the answer is that on the site plan, I don't know if we can, if we go back, and I think the area that we're, I think my battery, we'll use a manual method. Here we go. And so the admin area is in this zone right here. And as we look at the floor plan, it's the green color, which is both the administrative and thinking about the administrative support to the principals, as well as the guidance and nurse. And so could this be expanded in this direction on the site plan? The answer is there is some room on the site plan that could be developed to accommodate something like that. It currently is not in the floor plan, so it just hasn't been part of the design discussions at this point.
I think if I understand you correctly, Mr. Kaufman, you're talking about central office administration, not school.
Exactly, the Led Street.
So you were pointing out where the school administration was going to be for that school. But he's talking about the offices, like at central office.
Yeah, so I think the question is, is there may be an adjacent location on the building site that it could, and we'd have to just look at where would be most appropriate to put it. But could the site accommodate an increase in square footage to accommodate that? I think the answer is yes, it could.
All right. Since I only get that one.
All right, thank you. Ms. Timmons?
I'm not on JCC. However, I had a chance to follow along with you guys on educational TV. So I do have a question after I make my comment about, I have four fourth graders just getting ready to go into middle school, and so they'll probably end up in all three of the middle schools. So I'm glad it's going to be equitable, because I don't want them fighting at Thanksgiving, and who's the better school? So my question is, how long would it take to get the final plan approved? On option two, new middle school?
What was the question?
On option two on the new middle school, how long would it take to get the final plan approved? Because I think I heard that the final plan wasn't approved yet, and that some more research need to be done to get the final plan approved for option two.
Again, I'll turn to Mark. The next phase is once a path forward is selected, and then Harriman will have to develop the detailed plans for each one of the schools that Harvey Construction would take and then build. I think the timing is up there for the entire project, then it would say how long it would take for them to get the drawings. But as they are doing the drawings, the final drawings, they don't put it on a piece of paper once, and that's it. We have collaboration with everyone, just like we have in Phase One, and determine, you know, this could go here, we can move that there, until we have a final that they build to. Mark?
Yes, thank you. And that's exactly right. The idea that, in terms of the time that it takes, we start with the information that we've developed during this feasibility study. And then what we do is go back and refine the designs to the point where we've really got them to address the needs as we can best understand the needs. And so, and then we develop the details around the building so that the contractor can build it. So that full stage of going from where we are now to the construction documents that the contractor can build from is typically around nine months for the new school. And for the smaller additions and renovations, it's much, it'd be anywhere from four to six to eight months, depending on the complexity of those.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I have three quick items. First item is Fairgrounds. Cleveland Street is between, and this actually is not a question, but it's a comment. Cleveland Street is between Fairgrounds Middle School and the elementary school. I do not believe that we have a flashing school zone there. I think it's just a sign that says 20 miles per hour, which is an option that the city could use. It's a city street. So I guess my comment is directed towards the city. If we could get a flashing school zone on Cleveland Street, that would be great. I haven't driven the road, but I don't think there's one there. On Shady Lane, near New Searls, they have a nice flashing signal for school zone. And then they have a feedback sign that tells you how fast you're going. That would be nice for an improvement for Fairgrounds. So that's one comment, okay? My other comment is library at Penachuk.
You said you were going to limit people to one comment.
Excuse me, I'm talking, excuse me. I have three...
I have to let it go to everybody else.
I have three, excuse me, I have three...
Gentlemen.
Three quick items.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President.
When I say gentlemen, please stop talking.
Okay. Well, that's why I kept talking. I said gentleman. All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you have a question in there?
I have three, I have two other items.
Are they related to crosswalks?
They are related to, one is related to, okay, the library addition at Pennechuck. I have two quick questions. It's going to take me less than what he took, less time.
No, no. We all agreed, no one objected at the beginning, that we would just keep going around to give everybody an opportunity. Now, Mr. Kaufman asked one-
Right, and it's part of my opportunity.
No. You're going to get another opportunity. We're going to go around again.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you were just going around once.
No.
I thought you said that you were just going, just going to give us all an opportunity to speak.
No, I have, like, all these little Post-its, I would like at least a couple of them answered.
Well, all right. Then I'll keep my other two questions for when you come around again.
Thank you.
No problem.
Ms. Porter?
Okay, thank you. All right. My question is regarding, we have a middle school steering committee, and I'm wondering how involved that middle school steering committee is throughout the process, and also how much, I know that you've had a meeting for the middle school teachers and people who work at the school, not just the teachers, it should be everybody, but how involved throughout the process are they with designing the space? Because I think that the physical space goes hand in hand with the whole middle school concept, which is the purview of the middle school steering committee. And I know that we're already starting to get a couple of comments, there's the rough drawings, you know, as far as, I think there was one comment about traffic flow outside of a cafeteria. We had another comment about the library space, the design of that. So I'm just wondering, in an ongoing way, is that steering committee connected to the design of the building?
Yes, there will be continual communication with them. When we are addressing all the schools that we'll be touching, it's the Joint Special's intent to build the schools the way that the Board of Education and the school administration want them built. We're not, we're not going to build them against what your wishes are. So that, all of those groups, we've been involved with every department in the city and every group within the school system, and that will continue as we go through the process.
So the middle school steering committee has already met with you?
Yeah, so our primary liaison, I think, has been through Assistant Superintendent Fitzpatrick, and so that's been a conduit. We have met with staff of all three and administration of all three. And so, again, our primary conduit through that steering committee has been through that, and so Superintendent Mosley.
I would be very interested in having the actual steering committee meeting with the architects.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. I'm not sure if they've met with the committee, in all fairness to the construction, you know, Harvey and all, I don't think they quite know who they quite met with. I think they just come to the meetings, and they just present, and they answer questions. So I can follow up on that with you. If it hasn't happened, certainly we can facilitate with that particular committee or any committee, what it's fair to say, and again, I don't have it in front of me, I believe that there was some discussion around having a forum that invited every single teacher or administrator to come to give that feedback. So if it was that particular committee, I'm not sure, but certainly there was a forum that allowed all teachers, including the ones on the steering committee, to come and give feedback.
So I'm thinking that that's two separate things, in my mind, and I could be incorrect. But I think that the, they're kind of like a focus group that you would have with each of the adults who work in that building, because it's not just teachers, the custodians and the cafeteria workers should all have input into how their spaces function. But I think that the middle school steering committee is tasked with developing a middle school concept, so that's a, that's a group who has that. So I understand that Ms. Fitzpatrick represents that group, she's a key member of that group, she's the chairperson, I would, I don't know what she would be called, the chairperson. But I would, I would like to see that group really active in the entire process as another constituent group.
I see no reason that can't be accommodated, that'd be a really good source of information.
I think so, I think so. And it's more, it's more an established committee. I think when you're holding a forum at buildings, it's just who comes. Whereas this is a standing committee that's tasked with that whole middle school concept.
And also relative to Mr. Guarino's comment on the signage at the schools and the blinking lights, I've been working quite closely with the Department of Public Works on that. If you've been by Charlotte Avenue, so you've had a number of things incorporated in there, including additional stop signs, which are in legislation right now, a solar speed indicator to slow traffic down, ensuring that the site lanes on either side of the crosswalks has been increased and with no parking, and squaring the corner at Cleveland Street, I mean, Charlotte Street and Charlotte Avenue. But it's my intent, right after the first of the year, hopefully, to put in legislation to ensure that all the proper signage and crosswalk coverage and all of that for all the schools in the city are covered under a single task.
Thank you. Ms. Oden?
Mr. Kaufman brought up the central office. It's my understanding that the mayor would like to maintain the auditorium if we build a new school and sell or whatever with Elm Street. But if we, if the city keeps the auditorium, I don't know the interior of the building, but would there be space, it's a very central location, would there be space there to renovate for central offices that you are aware of, or could you look at that?
And in terms of a retrofit or renovation of the existing Elm Street school to accommodate central office, is that the question?
Well, part of it.
Part of it, right, just of course, not all of it, certainly.
Close to the auditorium that they want to maintain.
I think it's feasible that that structure, that building could accommodate that function.
Okay, thank you.
Again, if the Board of Education and working with the superintendent, if that's what you would like to address, we will certainly try to work it into the plans. We have to check on just how the costs work, but certainly, you do need a solution because of Brentwood, and if it can be incorporated in this project, we can see what we can do. But it'd have to come from, we'd have to have direction from the Board of Ed.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Like Mr. Kaufman, I have a bunch, and I'm trying to prioritize. One of the things that has been on my mind has been the pedestrian safety, like Mr. Guarino said. And he asked about fairgrounds, but I'm curious about Pennechuck. You talked about creating some turn lanes and perhaps putting a signal there at the Pennechuck Crossing of Manchester Street. Is there a possibility to do an overhead crossing, like they have on the old Route 3 there? I don't know what that actual street name is, but-
Henry Burke.
Henry Burke, on Henry Burke Drive? Or would that be a city issue? Or we're kind of both anyways?
Sure. So while I, we haven't explored an overpass there, the, so it would be another level of study to understand what would be required to create an overpass there. It would be some cost, and certainly involved in creating a bridge across the Manchester Street, but it just hasn't been somebody looked at yet.
My only concern is to do that, you probably are going to need to encroach on somebody's property, and I am not sure that they would be amenable to having a bridge coming out by their front door. So, I mean, we can look at it, but I don't think it might be feasible. And with the traffic light, the traffic will be stopped so the students can get safely across the street, so.
Thank you, I was envisioning a blinking light. So a traffic light makes me feel, makes me feel much better than a blinking light would. Okay, Mr. Moser, do you have another question at this time?
Oh, I was interested also in the traffic situation, but I see that's already been addressed. The, that's the thing that I'm looking at now, is the, the location for the new school, and the direction of traffic coming in from Main Dustable and from the, the area of Depot Road, which would be just to the west of the Buck Meadow, and see how that would work and availability for easy access for, you know, should they need it, for police and fire, ambulance, things like that.
I'm sorry, I got mixed up there. Was there a question in there?
Yeah, the whole thing was a question, what they're going to do with that, because I heard something before about redoing some of the streets for access.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just adding in that my thoughts on access by first responders.
You're relating to Buck Meadow Road. We are looking at that right now, negotiating with the people that own the property relative to access. And how the intersection at Buck Meadow Road is done will be probably constrained and driven by the Department of Public Works and the city engineer. Even though we're putting in a new traffic light on Manchester Street, the actual operation of the light and how it works and all that will be by the traffic management portion of the Department of Public Works. We're just paying for the light. How it gets controlled is up to them, and they do it in accordance with safety standards.
Okay, my primary question was the traffic around Cherrywood, Buck Meadow, and Main Dustable, and access through that area, my, you know, first responders.
Mr. Dubois, you made eye contact with me, so I'm going to make, believe that that means you have an answer.
No, I just wanted to make sure we answered his question. His question has to do with how do emergency services going to access the site? As we've shown in Pennechuck, we have an emergency secondary entrance. And I think, Jamie, if you could speak to how there's an emergency entrance off of Cherrywood, and you can expand on it if you want, but I think that's the question that's being asked.
Yeah, we met with the city fire department and police, and we did talk about access to all the schools, for the middle schools. This particular one, the discussion was that the main entrance to the building, or the main access to the site, would be down Buck Meadow and then on to that main drive. The secondary entrance is used if there's a patrolman maybe down there, or the fire department happens to be down that way, or they just need an additional access to the site.
One of the primary things is, because of all the horrific activities that have happened in schools, if the main entrance to the school is blocked, it certainly hampers their response time. So they prefer a second access, so that they can either get to the site or fight whatever they're fighting from both sides.
Thank you for clearing that up. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I'm going to go jump into the middle of my list about the geothermal energy. I've done a fair amount of research on it, and I understand that it has a very timely, excuse me.
Guys, can we stop the side conversations, please?
I understand that geothermal has a very timely return on its investment, and considering we're looking at a 30 to, at least a 30, if not a 50-year building, which is quite possible. As far as I know from my looking at this, and by no means digest everything, but it seems to me if we want to be green and we want to save energy, that the cost of fuel is something we actually can do away with in this building, if we use geothermal as a source for the heating and the cooling. Doesn't, you know, electricity we still have to buy and things like that, water, we still use utilities. But the fact is, our heating and cooling can be done by taking, extracting it, exchanging it, I should say, with the earth. And it's very cost-effective, and that's, those are real dollars that don't get spent every month. So I would ask, and I know that the city has looked at this in the past, but my understanding is that it has not been done for this project. And I'm asking that we do that analysis for this particular project, including the payback analysis, because, and I don't know, given it's 193,000-square-foot building, I don't know if Mr. Smith can calculate. I know you've done, you have calculations estimating energy requirements, so you must have BTUs, so you must be able to extrapolate out into all that. I'd be just, I'd be curious to know, because maybe it's $10,000 a month in fuel, I don't know, I have no idea what we spend in a building on, for fuel. But if that's possible, that's, that's $100,000 a year of real cash. And then the board could take action on what to do with it, you know?
Yeah, so we are looking right now, based on a comment we received from a previous meeting, we are going to, we're going ahead reviewing not only geothermal, thermal payback, photovoltaic, and also biomass was mentioned during those meetings. So we're looking at all three of those items, and once those reports are ready, we can share that.
Thank you, thank you very much. I think it's important we look at that.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Ms. Hoencey, do you have another question at this time?
Yes, I do. I'd like to know if we have any cost analysis on the transportation differential between going to a central location and out on the southwest corner of the city? Have we done any traffic studies recently through that? I presume we come across on, maybe by exit five and down, or however we're doing it, and any cost associated to redistricting? Because we're, I mean, we're moving the location, so I would imagine we redistrict, so just wondering, anybody explored those issues?
Full traffic analysis has been done by a professional traffic company for all four sites, and if somebody wants to look at it, it's not exactly thrilling reading, but it's got a lot of numbers in it. And the projection, of course, is for the new site, because you don't have a school there now, and you're trying to project how many cars and trucks. So that is being done. And what was the second part of the question?
Well, that traffic study would have to include, I think you're changing the dynamics over by the dump to putting a facility there, so you've got several different new paths coming into Ward Five, and then this one down, down south. But also the transportation, the busing costs, because we've got a lot of walking students to Elm Street. Now we're maybe not carting those students over, but I think there's going to be some differential in our transportation costs, and the cost of analyzing or redistricting to-
So I think, if it's state law that covers, if you're more than one mile from the school, you have to be bused.
Two.
And, but, two miles?
Two miles, under, over two miles, you get to be bused, under two miles, you get to walk.
Okay, so, and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Mosely in a second, because the bus, the bus evaluation of how many you need and everything is handled through the central office, so we don't get involved in that at all.
I think the discussion for redistricting is premature right now. Number one, if we can go back to the presentation, there has to be some type of determination whether we're going to keep the new building or go in another direction in terms of new construction. I also think it's important for the public to have some feedback on that, and also form some type of committee or task force to really look at what that feels like, redistricting. It is a light leading rod, it has to be done with fidelity, and it has to be publicized, and certainly done with a sense of equity throughout the district. As we, as we talked earlier in the evening around enrollment, we want to make sure that we get back to that discussion and make sure we try to get a plus or minus within margin of error. So I still think that once we get some direction in terms of where the district and the city wants to go in terms of new construction versus renovation for Elm Street, we get some direction and some clear numbers on enrollment, and we also look at a task force around redistricting, we'll certainly be able to better address the answers, the questions that you posed. To come up with a bus analysis right now for something that we haven't determined yet is certainly premature.
Thank you, but I would just, I don't mean to study, I thought Mr. Donovan could estimate, or, before we make a decision, I would really like parents to- estimate or, before we make a decision, I would really like parents to tell us which way they wanna go. Do they want their kids bused over there? Do they wanna keep, you know? I think they are part of our decision and it includes all these factors, but that's...
Yep, and I'd like to point out, Ms. Hoencey, that tomorrow evening's, um, public hearing was scheduled for, uh, I'm sorry.
Public informational.
Public informational meeting. Wait, will people be able to ask questions? Tomorrow.
Yes, I just said it's not a public hearing. Public hearing has a definitive inference relative to city law and, and with, and it's more limited. This is gonna be free for the people. Come in, ask questions, get answers right there and get an analysis, so.
So public question, comment period, I will call it. So tomorrow's public question, comment period was scheduled for 7:45, which seems abnormally late, but, um, that was scheduled specifically to allow parents who had parent teacher conferences at the middle schools to still be able to come and ask their questions. And as always, um, parents can email us or they can, um, email Alderman Dowd, um, any questions or comments that they have that perhaps are not able to share at the meeting tomorrow night.
But we are having a public, a regular public hearing before the board makes a decision, correct?
I believe so.
Can I sneak in a thought?
Can we get an answer first?
Yes. Okay, as this goes through the process, um, when it's determined what we're going to finally do and have a cost and we have to, uh, bond money, there has to be a public hearing. There will be a public hearing on, on, on the, uh, on the project and the bond issue before it could be voted on, final vote.
Okay, but I, I see those two things, uh, hearing for the bonds at the ultimate table is separate from a hearing for the board so we can make a decision on which way to plan.
Um, we, we haven't ever had a public hearing in that context at that point in the planning. Uh, we all work together and get a plan to go forward and, uh, then it'll have to go through the process, a, uh, bonding legislation will have to be put in, uh, it will get its first reading at the Board of Alderman, it will then be assigned to the Budget Committee and, uh, coming out of the Budget Committee, uh, it will go back to the full board. And when it goes to the Budget Committee, it will have a public hearing on, on what we're doing and, and comments. And as far as the public providing input, that's what the meeting Thursday is, uh, people can come in and see a lot of the, the plans and, and make comments either way.
It just seems like, as if I was a parent and I had to wait till the bonding of a plan that was already picked, that seems like a late stage and you'd feel like, well, gee, is there any change possible at that point?
Okay, thank you for sharing, Ms. Hoencey. Um, I would like to remind everybody that we scheduled tomorrow's hearing, uh, tomorrow's cub question and comment period for that precise reason. Ms. Timmons, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I just speaking with Stacy Hines and about the meetings that are before the public information at the middle schools, was it PTO conferences or whatever, um, we're gonna have boards that the architects provided at those three schools for people to look at as well. It's not gonna provide all the Q and A's opportunities, but at least give them a overview of what potential construction will look like.
Can I sneak in a thought here?
Um, yes, Mr. Moser.
Uh, this is just a thought. Yeah, we talked about the school populations and the, uh, and the city and so forth. Uh, one of the sources of information that we got some years ago, uh, I would say it was a good eight years ago or, or 10 years ago, where we were looking at the, uh, school populations and the, uh, city, uh, we had told the, uh, real estate people to see, uh, if they had some handle on the families that might be moving in or moving out. And, uh, this might be a good judge of how many kids coming in, how many kids that go out.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. That's quite clever. Um, so, uh, Ms. Timmons?
All right, thank you. Um, I have a comment and a comment is district office versus going into the middle school. Well, district office need to be in a central location and the new middle school is in Cherrywood. That mean that people have to take buses to get, that don't drive, all the way over to Cherrywood and that's gonna create a problem. So I think that's not a good idea to move, um, the district office and a middle school, any of the middle schools unless it's centrally located. That's the only comment I have.
Thank you. Mr. Guarino, one please.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I wanna apologize. I did not hear you say that we were limited to one. I thought you were just going around, but I didn't realize we were just limited to one question or one comment each time you went around. I didn't realize that. That's why I thought I could get three quick items in before, so I wanna apologize because I didn't hear you completely. I am kinda hard of hearing, so I didn't hear that part of it, okay? So I'm sorry about that. Um, as far as walkers go, um, I think the, uh, traffic study has, uh, trip generation to and from each, each of the, uh, middle schools and the number of walkers. And you have to be careful when you say walkers because I know as a parent whose kids went through, uh, the schools from kindergarten up to high school, that a lot of times kids that are walkers and they, they're not eligible for the bus, they're driven back and forth. So, so basically a lot of the, in, in fact, I looked into, uh, Elm Street, Mr. Donovan gave me some numbers on walkers, but it's hard to figure out who's actually walking or riding a bike because there's different, you know, some parents drop their kids off, uh, and then they walk home, so they're partial walkers, you know? So it's, it's, it's not an easy number to get a handle on who actually walks and who doesn't. And, uh, so you have to estimate it. Anyways, speaking of walking, um, I know on the new, uh, the new, uh, middle school, Cherrywood is a, uh, emergency access. However, I was wondering if there's going to be a path there for bicyclists or walkers, um, if they can walk aside of the emergency access? Because otherwise, if they had access to school, they'd have to go all the way around Buck Meadow and then come down there and it's a long way and it, there's no sidewalk on Buck Meadow.
No, it is our intention to have a walking bike path through the emergency exit. It will be blocked off so cars or vehicles can't get in there unless they're an emergency vehicle. But certainly, uh, I've been interfacing for months with a lot of people on Cherrywood and especially, uh, um, Medallion, sorry, thanks. Um, I've visited there several times, talked to many of them and I have email communication with many of them on a go- ongoing basis. And I, we've sort of addressed a lot of their concerns. I hope some of them, they come on Thursday to, uh, tomorrow to, uh, uh, see more of the plans, but I think we've alleviated some of their concerns. The, uh, people on Medallion are afraid we were gonna make access where that big circle is at the end and there was gonna be all kinds of traffic. Medallion's kind of a narrow street, so we're not doing any pedestrian or vehicle traffic on Medallion. That's why it comes out at that G and, uh, the neighbors for the, are aware of that's, and there are a lot of students down there. Right now, I think most of them are elementary, but by the time this is built, they're gonna be going into middle school and some of them said, they finally realized that, hey, my kid can just walk to a nice new school, I'm fine.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Ms. Porter?
Um, did I hear you mention that one of the schools had a health classroom? I was trying to flip through and see if I could notice that in the text, but I didn't see it.
Yeah, I've gotta go, um, back to, and again, I apologize, I don't have...
Was it Elm Street, maybe?
Modified, but I believe it is Elm Street.
Yes, it was Elm. Okay, will all three schools have a health classroom?
Yes, uh, they will.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
Okay, um, we've received, uh, an email from a retired teacher who is Nashville resident but lived, but worked in, uh, another school district. And, um, this man was concerned, uh, about, uh, well, let me read, "There is essentially one hallway in and out of the classroom core of the building. That might be good for security but awful for traffic flow, particularly during the lunch cycle. I can see hundreds of kids stacked up in the hallway, some going to lunch, others returning, others coming and going from special studies all at the same minute. I don't believe the second floor hallway will help much because the stairs just dumped the traffic right back into the same first floor hallway. I also worry how difficult it would be during fire drills and building evacuations." So I was just wondering if that has any concern for you, how you looked at that?
Sure, absolutely. And, and so I think we're in particular talking about the new, the design of the new, new school. So it's important to realize that there are...
You put this...
Oh, absolutely. Thank you, thank you, yep. Right here. So it's important to realize that the dispersion of, so you have, you have a wider, um, access to, to this point right here. And from there, um, what we have is we actually have multiple means to get up to the second and third level. So there's a set of stairs here and a set of stairs right here. And so if you think about the dispersion of populations going to not, not on one plan, but now they get dispersed on three different levels. And so the number at each level that are trying to go funnel into these individual corridor wings is actually much, much smaller. They're only serving the smaller population of, of each of these individual wings. And that's, in fact, that's the sort of, um, point behind this design is that we're creating smaller communities and, and so each of those classroom wings is smaller than, uh, the, the next closest example would be Fairgrounds where you have, uh, the, a single story, uh, and you have much greater number of students funneling through that central area. So I'm just gonna go back and, and share that one with you. Uh, so you get, so, so the number of classrooms that you have in each of those that are trying to funnel into a very small corridor and then get in and out of those wings, all of that happens on one level in Fairgrounds, that gets dispersed through three levels in the new model. So it, it, we, we think we've accommodated that and, and certainly through the fire and codes, we, we look at the number of occupants that are circulating through and make sure that those quarters are wide enough.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, one of the other questions that I had, um, was regarding, um, the idea that we have in our strategic plan regarding creating an alternative middle school environment. This is not out of district, special education students coming back in, but this would be an alternative middle school, not necessarily for, um, students with IUPs, but students who have other, um, perhaps behavioral or other, um, issues that, um, would benefit from a, a much more, uh, enclosed area with intensive help. Has that been addressed in any of, um, the plans at all?
So at, that was a conversation actually that was introduced, uh, later on, uh, in our, uh, development of the concepts. And so the idea of an alternative middle school, I believe it's actually something that might have existed in the district at one time and, and no longer exists. And so while we haven't looked at which area of a school, uh, one of the schools that, that it would reside in, we think there's enough capacity and, and most likely in the new schools where we would be able to accommodate a population, uh, for the middle school in that, in that, uh, in that way.
All right, thank you. So I'm just looking at the time. It is quarter of nine. Um, and I know that these fine gentlemen have to come back and spend a late evening with us tomorrow as well. So I'd like if we could go around one more time and, and, you know, uh, try and keep our questions or comments brief, um, at this last round and then we can, um, let these gentlemen go home and revisit it again tomorrow night. Um, Mr. Moser, do you have any final question or comment?
No, I have, uh, heard everything. I've said what I had to say.
Okay.
I'm finished.
Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. So I, for the information that I gave out, I'm gonna refer you folks to the spreadsheet. Uh, at the top, it, it addresses the cost and the square feet. And, uh, I got this information right out of the book, uh, in your financial summary toward the back, so hopefully I didn't transpose any numbers or anything. But the new middle school, um, is, is, uh, expected to be 193,340 square feet. Fairgrounds after renovation, 123,000 to 17, and Penachuk increases, uh, up from 102,000 up to 134,000 square feet. I'm trying, if, if the goal is equity and if, if equity somehow reflect, is reflected in the physical amount of space, there's a delta, there's a difference of nearly 70,000 square feet going from the new proposed middle school to that of Fairgrounds. And another, you know, separate obviously from Penachuk to the new middle school, there's a difference of 59,000 square feet. So can you help me understand what that, all that space is used for? How much, and how much of that is special ed? I imagine the special ed has to be in that number because it's under the roof, right? So can, can you address that, please?
Absolutely, and, and so you're, you're right in thinking in that direction. Not only are we accommodating more students because we're accommodating the special education students, but the amount of area per student increases with special education. So we use, uh, a factor, uh, of 36 square feet per student in a general classroom. We have a much higher, uh, square feet per student in a special education, uh, in, uh, room it's, as well. So, so that's, that's largely accounting for the, the difference in area in the, um, the new school, so.
What is the, uh, the, the guideline that you're using for a sped space?
It's actually, um, it's variable depending on the program. So some, some programs such as functional life skills require more space than some other self-contained programs. And so it really is dependent on the, uh, program that we're looking at. And, and the new school has a variety of the different, different programs in it. And so, uh, we're bringing again the, um, uh, two programs over that are currently exist at, at Elm Street, but we're also putting a program that currently exists at Fairgrounds in it as well. And so those populations can range anywhere from, uh, uh, on, on the lower side, uh, 10 up to 15, uh, sometimes fewer depending again on the needs of those individuals. That, so that, that counts for a significant component of it. The other aspect is because of the layout of the, of the site on the new school and, and trying to keep that, uh, arrangement of the building as compact as we can, um, that we have a little more circulation in that plan. So the, we're not able to do it quite as efficiently as some of the other ones. So we have more stairs, we count the stairs that we have on each level of, of the building as part of the overall square footage of the building too. So, so what it would, what we haven't provided, which would also be helpful, is to understand the net square footage and the gross square foot differences because those sometimes can be a lot closer, um, but the gross factor accommodates all the circulation in the stairs that we have to put into the...
So that's every surface area that somebody might walk on?
In, in two-dimensional plane, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay, 'cause it, that would be helpful and I, I would appreciate, I don't know if you have the number, maybe you can get it for us, is just what is the square footage of that? And you're treating it separately and I understand why you are, but if you could, um, identify that square footage, because that will help us in here.
Sure.
Just try and under, because you've broken it out elsewhere, right? You, you went out of your way in the programming section to show the special ed classrooms and the enrollments. I think it would be helpful to also give us an idea of the square footage because it's a huge commitment. I think it's a commitment we should make, don't get me wrong, but it's always about scale and scope. And I, for an investment of almost $5 million, uh, let's highlight it and say, hey, that's a, you know, 45,000 square foot facility that we've accommodated and, you know, I think that's a selling point to the public, quite frankly. So I, I would leverage that. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Hoencey?
Um, I have a question, but I just wanted to do a follow-up on that. The square footage, the 193,000, does that include the lower level square feet or is that additional?
I, I believe that's additional to that number.
Thank you. Okay, Mike?
Do you have an, do you have an estimate?
Of what that square foot number is?
Yeah.
Uh...
Okay, you can get back to us, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll do a takeoff of that.
Okay. Um, I just wanna, I just wanna know, just to be clear, if we're gonna follow, uh, state law 199.3, um, where the board actually approves this plan? And then the JS SBC is the one that's involved in constructing and overseeing the plan that the board approves?
So the process works this way. The Board of Education will meet on, uh... The Board of Education will meet and determine what their recommendation is relative to moving forward and present that to the Joint Special through the five members that are on the committee. And then the 10 members of the Joint Special will make the final determination. But obviously, if there's a discrepancy, we'll probably have to have other meetings. But I'm not sure at this point what, the biggest decision is Elm Street or a new school. Beyond that, the process will be going forward, you know, as we do all the detailed design, this Board of Education will still be involved and, you know, things may move and, you know, change and, but the big decision is, do we spend another $20 million and renovate Elm Street and come up with a building that doesn't meet any of our needs and has no feels and traffic problems, et cetera? Or do we spend $20 million less and build a new school which is state of the art? And the other piece is that when it got to the three schools, having discussions with Dr. Mosley, we want to make sure that as best we can, there's equity amongst the three schools, so.
Okay. Well, the delta's 15 million, not 20. But I think, yeah, the board needs to have some discussions on its own and obviously that you have more than, you have a quorum on your board. So the vote will probably be the same, but the approval should follow state law and come from our body to yours.
Thank you, Ms. Hoence. I don't think that anyone has disputed that the board should vote. The question was, where does it go? Does the Joint Special bring it to the board or does the board send it to the Joint Special? And we've gotten our answer to that. So the board votes, we send it to the Joint Special. Ms. Timmons has left us. Mr. Guar, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Mosley.
Just real quick, I just first of all want to thank Harvey Construction for coming out and being a part of this. This is a prodigious undertaking and thank you. I also just wanted to say that this is, tomorrow night will be an opportunity for more feedback on the building project. I just wanted to let the public know that if you can't make it to the forums and you want to get more feedback and just communicate that. We've also designated a website on, or a link on our website for people to give us feedback to. And all that feedback will go to the construction individuals. So I just want to say it's middleschoolproject@nashua.edu. This is a large project. We have three middle schools that we're talking about here. It's going to provide some equity here and I really want to thank the public and the construction people for coming out tonight and we're going to do it again tomorrow. So thank you for the time, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mosley. I'm glad to hear of that email address because that's really helpful. Instead of emailing me, please email middleschoolproject@nashua.edu. Go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have one quick question. We got a, another email to the Board of Education from someone who is concerned about the library space at Penachuck Middle School. And it says library addition. So I guess my question is, is that additional to existing space? And will there be, I guess the second part of that question would be, I guess they're looking for workspace for multimedia and also equipment storage. So I noticed it's an addition on the Penachuck.
Yeah, the addition displaces the current library that's located and the, and that was done for a couple of reasons. One, as we met with the staff and particularly the librarian, there's, the current space is in an interior-only location that lacks, it has a skylight, that's only direct access to natural light. And acoustically and environmentally, the space could be largely improved. And so what we've shown is an area that's approximately the size of the fairgrounds library. And so as we looked at the model of these three schools, we had looked at the fairgrounds library, which is a good model of the area of, that we're seeing in a library and matches the New Hampshire DOE area. And so we also had a forum yesterday, I think it is now, no, maybe, maybe two days ago, Monday. They're blurring a little bit, with staff. And we had a great conversation with the librarian at Penachuck regarding the needs of that space. And we also said that we would love to continue working as we go through the design to understand how we can make sure that we meet all the needs. One of the needs in addition to just having tables and books and study spaces is also gathering space. And so we said, the chapter is not over on that one, that we'll continue to work as we get through the next phase of the design with her.
Thank you.
Ms. Porter?
On the new school site, there's the natural preservation area. Can you tell, will that, I know that in one of the presentations early on, we had seen like outdoor classroom type of space. Is that included in here in the pricing or is that like an extra? Well, it could be, Adam.
Yeah, so one of the things that's, was sort of, it's sort of, I guess, like making lemonade out of lemons. And the idea that we have a restriction on the site with some of the wetland areas. And so while that restrains some of the development area of the site, the other thing it provides is a great opportunity, learning opportunity, in thinking about coupling that with science classes. And so we think there's a wonderful compatibility of that. And so while we haven't developed a formal outdoor learning space, that will be part of our conversations as we move forward on the site design.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. All right. Ms. Oden?
I'm set.
Okay.
So I'll be last then. I do have one question about changing population demographics. Ms. Hoence had talked about enrollment population and enrollment capacity and changing, but one of the things that we've seen here in Nashua over the last 10 years is the number of English language learners that we have coming into our schools. And I don't anticipate that changing. That's a personal view, but I think that we're trending upward. And so I noticed that you have revamped the ELL spaces at Penachuck, which I'm very excited about, and also at fairgrounds. And I see some dedicated spaces in the proposed new building and also in the renovation at Elm option, which I'm really excited about. But I'm wondering about flexibility. If our population continues to grow and we need to expand ELL services, is there the capacity to do so in, I guess, all of the plans?
Yeah, so what we've, again, tried to be mindful of is in developing these plans that we don't build every space to the exact square footage we need. So for instance, what we see now is that at Penachuck, we've got a closet that was actually converted into a special education space and so-
Yes, special ed would go with that question too, thank you.
Right. And so, right, but so the idea is that when they built these schools, they never anticipated what might become a program. And so with these, what we've tried to do is provide a series of smaller spaces that can, if the need be, convert to occupiable space. So it's not like taking over a storage closet and to put a program in. So there are collaboration rooms, for instance, that those can be used for learning environment spaces as well. And so each of the, in the new school model, you'll see that each of those wings has collaboration room. That can be converted over to a small instruction space. And so it could accommodate growth in an ELL. And that is also, you'll see in each of those models, we've had these collaboration rooms in each of the team areas of the, of the three different schools.
Okay, thank you. That's, I'm very excited to see that. I appreciate it. So I would like to thank you all for coming out this evening. I know it can be exhausting coming out night after night and answering all these questions, but I really appreciate your willingness to engage with the board and then tomorrow night with the community. We all want some great spaces for our children. We all want them to have the best that we can do. And so I'm very thankful to be part of this process. And so with that, I think that concludes this evening. So I would entertain a- To adjourn? Yes. Thank you, Ms. Hoence. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. I'm going to call it for Mr. Moser.
Okay.
For the second.
I did, I seconded.
Yes, you did. It was simultaneous with Mr. Kaufman. And when you're ready, Mr. Guarino, the roll.
Okay, on the motion to adjourn, Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Moser?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Hoence?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Motion carries.
Okay, great. It is 9:04 and we are adjourned. Thank you all.